Good evening. This is Olentangie Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is June 25. We had some technical difficulties, so I think it's 6:33, 6:34, and we will end our meeting. Mrs. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. O'Brien.
Present.
Mrs. Patrick.
Present.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel.
Here.
And Dr. Wise.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll now entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into our first presentation tonight. Joining us from our is our Supervisor of Food Service, Bethany Lanko, and I almost took you off tonight's agenda because I knew you would not be bringing food since we're virtual, and that is something we all look forward to. So, welcome, Bethany.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Yes, I do apologize. I cannot have virtual snacks for everyone. Hopefully, next time we meet in person, I will have some extra tasty goodies for you all. But thank you for having me here today to just give a brief update of the Food Service Department and what is happening. So I first want to start this presentation by thanking my amazing and dedicated food service team for all the work they did this past year, and especially for the work that they did starting in March with the COVID-19 shutdown. It was an all-hands-on-deck scenario to get our emergency feeding program started once the governor closed our schools in March. The Food Service Department, from the employees to the school managers, to the Food Service Administrative Office staff stepped up to help service our community in such a weird time for us all. Our procedures had to change several times throughout the program, and the Food Service team was able to adapt quickly and always ensuring that we were doing what was best for our students. So they are true heroes, and I just want to thank them immensely. With my little saying, "Welcome to the club" with all the superheroes, so they were indeed. Now, just that kind of update of what's happening in the food service world. So for just, for those who don't know, Food Service, we are a separate fund than the General Fund, which means we are meant to be self-supporting. So all the food, the supplies, maintenance, purchases of equipment, salaries, benefits come out of our OO6 Food Service Fund. And in essence, our district has 24 restaurants operating on any given school day. So probably, we are probably one of the, you know, most productive restaurants in the area with 24 sites happening at any given school day. As a department, we are enrolled in USDA's National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program. Because of that, we are overseen by the United States Department of Agriculture. They have many rules and regulations that we have to follow on a given day. The two major ones that we have to follow is, number one, making sure that all of our meals planned and served follow the federal meal pattern as set by USDA. So there's a meal pattern for lunch, and there's a meal pattern for breakfast, also broken down by different grade levels, too, that we have to follow. And then the second big regulation we have to follow is that we participate in the free and reduced-priced meal program. So that means that these meals have to be offered to all students and those that also apply for free and reduced meals. When we serve the meals, then we do get federal reimbursement back from USDA for the meals that are served, and there are different rates for each of the different categories, so for paid, for reduced, and then for a free student. Then additionally, we also have to follow what's called the Smart Snack in Schools, which I know I've talked to you all before, but those are the federal à la carte standards for any foods or beverages sold to students outside the reimbursable meal pattern during the school day. And in this instance, the school day is defined as midnight to 30 minutes after the end of the school day. It doesn't just apply to the cafeteria. It applies to vending machines, school stores, if there's any fundraisers. Anything sold to students has to meet those federal à la carte standards. And additionally, we always provide meals to students that have documented medical disabilities. The one that we see the most of are those students who have food allergies, and we're always make sure we're making accommodations for those students. We also have some students with texture that we may do different textures of food for them. Also, any students that may have celiac disease, we make sure they have a gluten-free diet. Then other federal regulations we have to follow on Food Service is having a local school wellness policy, which myself and Alicia Barron help manage that. All of our Food Service staff have to have professional development each year as required by USDA, so we typically accomplish that by having an in-service day each school year. Then we also have to have a food safety or a HACCP program. HACCP's meaning for Hazard Analysis Critical Control Point. We'll be updating that over the summer to reflect some additional COVID-19 standard operating procedures we want to implement in our kitchens. Then we have a lot of reporting and record-keeping that we have to do between menus that are planned, production records, meal counts, cash receipts, free and reduced-priced meal applications, direct certification, just a lot of paperwork and record-keeping that we have to keep and have in case the state would come in and need to see it. Other regulations we have are potable water, so ensuring that we have potable water for all students at all meal services, both lunch and breakfast. Then we have resource management, which this encompasses kind of two major things that we have to look at each year. Paid lunch equity, which typically at this time of the year, we're looking at if we're going to increase lunch prices or not. We're not making a recommendation to increase lunch prices for next school year. We're able to do this because we do have, we had a positive balance in our OO6 Fund back in December 31st of 2019, so we are not required to raise lunch prices. So we're not making a recommendation to the board for next school year to increase lunch prices. And then another part of resource management is called non-programmed foods revenue, which is ensuring that our à la carte program, so we serve a lot of meals, but we also serve a lot of à la carte for our students. And they, the federal government wants to make sure that we are recouping the cost of those à la carte items and that we're getting an equal proportion of revenue back for those food items sold. And then the last one we have to deal a lot with is procurement. So since we are a federal entity and we receive federal funds, we have to follow certain federal procurement regulations for the government whenever we purchase items out of our OO6 Fund. Here's some of our nitty-gritty numbers from this past year. So these numbers I have up on the screen are from pre-COVID. So we served 128 days under the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program. We did over 1.2 million lunches, an average about 90, 9,500 lunches per day. Breakfast, we did over 160,000, for an average about 1,200 per day. Our à la carte equivalents, which is all those à la carte extra items that the students buy, and also including any adult meals we do, do, we did over 900,000, our à la carte equivalents, for an average of over 7,000 per day. The total meals we served were over 2.3 million for an average of 18,000 meals per day. So then, with COVID, our emergency feeding, we were able to feed our students under USDA's Seamless Summer Option, which is an extension of the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. It is typically for areas that have over 50% free and reduced students. We do not meet that category, but USDA did offer a waiver and allowed us to participate in the program. So all the meals we served under the emergency feeding was through Seamless Summer. We distributed at six sites, Orange High School, Liberty High School, Olentangie Meadows, Glen Oak, Oak Creek, and Heritage. We started the program on March 17th, and our last meal distribution was on May 18th. Initially, we had to operate as a targeted enrolled site, which meant we had to ensure that we were reaching as many students who are on free and reduced lunch as possible, but we also had to offer the program to all students. And then on May 15th, we received notification from ODE that because of the unemployment rates in the area, we were able to change and we could operate as an open site, and it was retroactive to the start of the program in March. So from a reimbursement standpoint, when we were a targeted enrolled site, we were going to be reimbursed for all the free and reduced students that came and picked up meals, but we were only going to get a certain percentage of those paid students that came. So when we changed to an open site, we were able to get reimbursement for 100% of the meals served. So for the 49 days we served, we served 47,747 lunches, same amount of breakfast, for a total of 95,494 meals. The reimbursement rates for Seamless Summer, there was only one option. There's a rate for lunch and a rate for lunch. Obviously, we did have to purchase food and supplies for this program. So overall, we purchased 75,000 for food and supplies to run the program. It did, that number does not include any of the food or supplies we already had in-house when we shut down, and it doesn't include any of the food or supplies we were able to reabsorb into our system. It does not include staff or labor in those, in that dollar amount. So obviously, from a financial standpoint, the COVID-19 closure did financially impact the Food Service Department. We lost 43 days of service, which means 43 days of revenue. On average, we bring in about $53,000 a day in revenue, so that's over $2 million that we lost in revenue. And then on a closure day, our net loss is about $33,000, $33,000 a day, so times 43 days is 1.4 million. And then while we did, we lost 43 days to the COVID closure, we did have an additional two calamity days, so we actually had 45 days of lost revenue from, from a department, from a Food Service Department standpoint. Planning ahead for next school year, we've been on, we've been on a lot of webinars and talking to a lot of other Food Service Directors and kind of, you know, tagging, founding ideas off of each other. So we're waiting some guidance from USDA and ODE, obviously with all the rules and regulations with National School Lunch. They have greened waivers prior with COVID-19, so we're waiting to see what they come down for the fall. And then we're also working with the Delaware Health Department, Delaware General, General Health District, on different things that they want to see from us. So we've already had conversations about self-service stations. So a lot of times, we'll have students where they will maybe use the same tong to serve salad, for instance, onto their tray. That is more than likely going to not be able to happen. Everything will have to be pre-portioned up for the students. We'll probably have an increase of disposable prepackaged items. We're looking at our high-touch points, so a pin pad is always something that's kind of, that comes up a lot, because that's what the kids use to put their number in, to come up in our point-of-sale system. So we would likely be transitioning back to scanners, or the cashier can type in the student's ID number or their last name to bring up their account. We're looking at our increased food safety and sanitation procedures, so updating that HACCP manual I was talking about, making sure we have proper monitoring for our employees, that they're protected appropriately, and social distancing. So even when they're in the kitchen, how do we social distance in the kitchen while they're preparing food? We're coordinating with Food Service Manufacturers, brokers, trying to see if there's going to be supply chain issues, looking for new products. So obviously, none of this is set. These are just things we're gearing up for as we continue to plan for next school year. So that is all I have for everyone this evening. I know we have some hands up.
We do. Mr., I have a couple of questions for you, but let's start with Mr. O'Brien.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. My question, you briefly touched upon it. Have you had any significant challenges with suppliers and the ability to source, have any of your vendors not been able to reopen, et cetera?
We are lucky that we use a multitude of vendors for food and supplies. We mainly use Gordon Food Service in Cisco, but then we have some smaller suppliers that we use to help supplement. So luckily, during the COVID feeding, we were able to get everything that we needed. But you hear like restaurants not being able to get ketchup packets, or like two-ounce souffle cups that have never been an issue, so we're going to work through it as they come up, but hopefully, we won't have too much of a issue with getting food or supplies that we may need.
Okay. Well, I think you guys did a great job through the crisis, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll second that, too. We appreciate all of the work of our Food Service workers, and I know they had to, they had to transition quickly, and we appreciate them doing that. I see Mr. Rafe also has his hand up. Mark?
You go ahead and ask your questions.
Okay.
I'll close.
I had a question. I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't, and it's around, you mentioned the differentiation of offerings based on grade. Is elementary all one offering, or do you have to change what you offer as you, as you do different lunches for different grades?
So the way the meal pattern works by USDA is they have grade level different, like groups. So we have a grade group that's K-5. That's a meal pattern for K-5.
Okay.
We have a meal pattern that's 6 through 8, and then a meal pattern that's 9 through 12. So we're very lucky at Olentangie that our grade groupings, is the way our schools are structured, match the USDA meal patterns.
Yeah.
Because some schools, districts, and where they may have to mix some, and that can be a little bit tricky at times.
Okay.
But, so we follow, luckily, the elementaries all have the same meal pattern. Middle schools have the same, and then high schools have the same meal pattern.
Okay. That's, that's good. One of the other questions I had for you was, you mentioned that on 12/31 of 19 is the balance that they look at to determine where we're going, what we're going to have to, or what would determine if we had to raise the price of lunches. So if we had, if you looked at the balance on 3/31, when we had entered into the pandemic, or 4/30, would we be in a different situation with what we're charging for lunches going forward?
No, we would, we were still in a positive balance on 3, at the end of March and end of April.
And, you know, you just mentioned that the packaging might have to change. There could be shortages, or we might have to do more individualized portions. Do you foresee a significant increase in cost to do that?
Individually wrapped items are notoriously more expensive than bulk items. So for instance, we were using some prepackaged sandwiches, and they're, they usually run around, I think they were around 80 cents to a dollar, and we can make them a lot more cost-effectively. But yeah, prepackaged items are always going to run a little bit, a little bit more.
And you think we'll have a higher concentration of packaged items this?
Potentially so.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all the questions I had. Mr. Rafe?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Bethany for, for giving the update and all the work that her and her team did during our closure to feed so many of our families. I think just with people working, trying to get their kids educate, their jobs done, their kids' education's done, having the ability to come get breakfast and lunch for the week and have it all taken care of was such a relief for them, that, that it really was just a great thing that she did for our community, her team did for our community. So our Food Service workers are really, and I would say to every one of you, if you have ever wanted to get the best value, $3 value meal in the state of Ohio, visit one of our high schools, and they will make you an incredible deli sandwich, or entree, or whatever it is. But for $3, you cannot eat all the food we provide, and it is made with love.
Yeah.
So Bethany, I got your name, first name, Lanko. Two years ago, I just, like, I mind-blanked on her name at a presentation, and she hasn't stopped teasing me since, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To you and all your team for all that you've done.
Thank you. It was a joy to do. I'm glad we were able to do it.
Well, every, honestly, every day, every day. It's like they're making their food for their own kids.
Okay. Well, yes, I think Mr. Rafe speaks on behalf of all of us for how grateful we are, and thank you for joining us this evening. I know you have a busy summer ahead of planning for, you know, the upcoming school year, so thanks for taking the time to join us tonight.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. I don't see anybody, any other virtual hands up, so we're going to move on to our update from Jeff Gordon, our Director of Business Management and Facilities, and he is going to give us the latest on Elementary 16. Mr. Gordon, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here, and I also want to echo the sentiments you all made. It's a pleasure working with Bethany and the great job she does for our Food Service Department. So that I will transition into Elementary Number 16. We do have some good news with Elementary 16, and despite everything going on around us, it actually created a good bidding environment. So our cost for Elementary 16 came in quite a bit lower than what anybody would have expected. As, as most of you are aware, and those on the Facilities Committee, we had a lot of discussions about how we priced out this elementary and where it came in on, came in at, and based on seeing the escalation in costs. And, and what we found in the feedback that Robertson Construction received once they started getting bids in is that the reputation of Olentangie, along with the uncertainty of what was going on with, with the COVID-19 closures at the time, the districts really looked at us as something they, they wanted to share thing that, that could work for Olentangie. They knew that we were, were likely to pass levy, and then we then, of course, did pass bond issue that they could get in with Olentangie. They would know what they were doing for the next year. So they were very, very aggressive at bidding the building, along with what has continued to be an efficient design. So Robertson could not emphasize that enough. They did assure me that we shouldn't expect to get this kind of pricing a year from now when we go back out for the next two, and hopefully, we do get similar pricing, but for different reasons. So having said all of that, where the numbers in front of you, the construction cost, the original budget was at $19,516,000, which then came in at $17,154,000, along with the construction contingency. So as you can see, we came in over $2 million under what we had projected and what, what we thought. And we spent quite a bit of time examining, and we talked about the, the cost other districts were seeing for schools in, in Ohio when we set that price. And we were, we did discuss a contingency, which was not included in any of our bidding numbers, and that's not anything that we shared with, with even with Robertson at the time, as far as bidding. So that was not included in these, this price. And the original cost we started out was 235 a square foot, which was set by the Facilities Committee. So we came in around $212 a square foot. Now, keep in mind, these costs do not include any of the off-site costs, which have, with our recent agreement with the county and the, the agreement you approved last, last beginning of the month, the lease agreement with Met, with Metro, we expect those to be somewhere between, tying it in somewhere $700,000 to $900,000. Those are not included in this budget right now, and we will be bringing in the next couple of months, another item to the board to approve for the, once we bid out, get the cost and bid out those off-site utilities. So you'll see more on those off-site utilities coming forward. And for those that don't know, the GMP, just a reminder, is it's a guaranteed maximum price, and when we enter with Construction Manager at risk to build the building, they, they're responsible for giving us bidding it out, giving us the price. And once they set that price, they're at risk to meet that, to meet that, that GMP, that guaranteed price. Now, there's items that could change if the district makes a change, or it makes alternates that they accept, or change orders, things that happen throughout the project that we would make changes on, they would not be at risk there. But once they set that price, other than change orders, they're responsible for, for making that, making that, meeting that price, meeting or ending below that price. Couple other items of note on here that just may jump out as you look at the rest of the budget. We haven't, we haven't been very far along, obviously, with construction, so a lot of the items underneath the subtotal, the utilities, owners' wrap miscellaneous, owners' contingency, those things, we really haven't made many adjustments on that. The owners- The owners rep did drop significantly because when we price these buildings out, we make these estimates. We price it, we're fortunate to have Bill Sullivan, who's agreed to work with us again and for the next two buildings. But we don't always know that once we go out to bid that, that those can be available or still willing to do that. So we price that, what we would pay for another third party to come in and do that. So by using Bill, we get great expertise along with a, a good price for those, those extra services. And I've talked before about between both Bill and Bruce having, we wouldn't be able to get the quality and the, be able to do the work that we do and get the amount out of our facilities office without their expertise and their, their time on the projects. Any questions?
I see Mrs. Fiesel has a question.
Yeah, along the lines that Mr. O'Brien asked the last speaker, are they seeing any delays in getting the necessary materials on time? Because this is a true time crunch.
We, we are not, we have not seen today, not anything outside of the normal delay, I don't want to say delays, the normal timeframes that we would see. So I talked earlier when we did the GMP one, which was for the site, we included on top of the site, some of the other items that we had to get shop drawings done for and some middles. They included some of the concrete, the rebar, the structural steel door frames, I think were part of that. So we looked at the items that we traditionally would have a long lead time on, understanding that we had a short timeframe to get the, get the building done. And some of those things we need to get started on, that we wouldn't necessarily be able to wait till GMP two to get those shop drawings started and get that work done. But outside of that, and we had a meeting this morning where we did discuss some of the timeframes. We have not had any feedback that we're having any delays on any of the items that we started already to have, that those appear to be rolling and where we want them or that we've had any delays in material based on the, the COVID crisis right now and what's, what's going on in the workforce.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we're going to pray for good weather. So we have no delays there.
They, they were out there today. They, we doubled up the earth movers to try to make up some of the time that we've lost. And the rain didn't help us earlier in the week, but they were out there going at it today and, and a couple, few more days of good weather and it'll, it'll go a long way in helping us get back on track.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I don't see any other questions and we appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the President's Report. As I always do, I'll try to be brief because tonight, the President's Report is not worthy of highlighting. Our discussion items are where we need to spend our time. So I'll begin by giving accolades to our administration for our virtual graduations. Very well done. I'm so impressed with the professionalism and the personal touches to the programming. The class of 2020 deserved this effort and I'm so happy they received it. I think I speak on behalf of the entire board when I say graduation is a welcomed reminder of why we signed up to serve. We truly enjoy it. And each year I anxiously await to see what message the superintendent and principals decide to send our departing students. And this year did not disappoint. The thoughts that crossed my mind when I was watching the student speakers were number one, to be a great speech writer is a special talent. But secondly, to deliver a great speech is an entirely different and perhaps more unique talent. So to see both of those talents in synchronicity continues to astonish me and it's so rare. But since I possess neither, I truly envy and appreciate those that do. In addition to our graduation speeches, there was a particular speech that I had the fortune of viewing by an Orange High School student named Cameron McCarthy. So I will encourage you to watch that and you can find it on YouTube. It's Olentangie Local Schools Cameron's speech and Cameron is K H A M E R O N S. He speaks about the pandemic and he delivers a truly spectacular speech executed with dyna, in a dynamic manner. He emphasizes the gravity of our situation. But where we go from here is the true measure of who we are. So if Mr. McCarthy is not a future leader, I will be shocked. So I'm anxious for you to be able to view it, please do so. In graduation celebrations and speeches are fun to focus on, but our district and our country have some very heavy issues facing us. These issues notably how we return to school and racism is where our attention needs to be. These are both emotional and difficult topics that we need to continue navigating a path forward. People are scared and they're divided as to what that path might look like. Change is hard and regarding to our, in regards to our return to school, we want what we used to have. But that's not possible at the moment. Hold on, I lost my way. And regarding racism, these conversations are difficult. They're uncomfortable, but they're necessary and our work there is never done. So as we move forward, we hold to our mission of maximize learning for every student. And we look towards our strategic plan to guide us in the best interest of our staff, our students and our community. So I'm going to borrow Mr. Rafe's phrase of we're always looking for ways to get better. That, that mission is never done. So I won't monopolize any more of your time this, this evening and we're going to have a deeper discussion when we get into the discussion items on tonight's agenda. So thank you very much. And I'll give it to you, Mr. Rafe, for your superintendent's report.
Well, thank, well, thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Lamont, you want to move me forward, please? So as you all know, we have sent out back to school survey participation or back to school surveys to parents, students and staff. You see there that we had good participation, about 50%, I think, which is 13,000 parents is of strong representation. Interestingly, that is divided up almost equally amongst elementary, middle and high school. Student participation rate and staff participation rate obviously is a little bit higher there. So we think we have a very good idea of what our people want with regards to returning to school. The governor allegedly is going to be releasing his guidelines, requirements, guidelines next Tuesday. So we'll be putting that all together. Our back to school committee has been meeting and is getting all this information so that they can put together a plan that we know will have a lot of flexibility to it and hopefully get us back to school as normal as possible. But also, you know, I, it just, you know, again, if you follow what's happening with the, with the virus, it's, we're going to have to be flexible and fluid as we move forward. So more information to come soon. I think that, that we're targeting around about July 10th for the initial release of our plan. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Rafe, I was just going to ask, it's my understanding that some other districts have announced their plans for the fall. I can't understand how they can announce plans without the governor's guidance.
Yeah, I struggle with that, so thank you for saying that. And, and I know people are anxious and we've, we've used the phrase all along, we want to go slow to go fast. So I credit Mr. Wright for that. So we, you know, the more information we have, the, the better decision we're going to be able to make. And we don't want to make, like, release a plan that we immediately have to change.
Right.
We can release a plan July 10th and it could change between July 10th and August 20th when we start back to school. But you know, I think we're going to have a good solid framework of what that's going to look like here to start. I don't understand why, why people are doing that, releasing their plans without the governor's guidance. Because if the governor's guidance says you can or can't do something or you, everyone must wear masks and you've already released, we're not wearing masks, well, what are you going to do? So, yeah. Thank you for that. Next slide, please, Mr. Lamont, thank you. So there's a lot of board action items on this agenda and there are one, two, three, four, five, six of them here, starting with, I just want to make sure I go through a good thorough explanation and we're going to have, I know we're going to have a quick, actually some discussion on it with regards to these action items. The resolution for the career technical education in, to not offer career technical education in grade seven and eight. That's simply a matter, we do that every year. Our curriculum does not align to the career technical education standards. We're happy with the seventh and eighth grade curriculum in those areas. So we offer a lot of career technical education in the high school. So it's necessary to pass this resolution here on the agenda. The resolution to continue paying regular and supplemental contracts at the, for, you notice at the end of 2019, 2020 school year, consistent with policies and agreements. This is on the advice of council that we formally do this, even though we've already said, we've already done this, already paid it all out. This is kind of like a final auditing step to, to kind of clear all the hurdles. So we just think that this is something that requires specific board action. And there are four salary increase categories on this agenda. The non-union, unrepresented classified employees. As you know, there is a new OPSI Association 222 that is currently under negotiations. This does not apply to those employees, but all of our other non-union, unrepresented classified employees, we're recommending 2.5% salary increases. We're also recommending 2.5% salary increases for the food service workers, the district administrators who are under a contract with the board. Last board meeting, we gave a 2.5% increase for all the administrators who were at the end of their contract. And then a 2.5% salary increase for the superintendent and treasurer. And then I have there in our action items, some administered, there are some new administrative title revisions that we are recommending. One is for Jeremy Mitchell, who will be being reclassified as a supervisor for custodian maintenance and field tech. Currently, he's just a custodial supervisor. He's going to oversee all those classifications and have other supervisors report to him. Alicia Barons, currently our supervisor of student wellbeing. We're recommending that she become now an assistant director as her responsibilities have continued to grow in the area of mental health and student wellbeing. Jackie Merkel changed her classification from supervisor of equity and inclusion to assistant director of equity inclusion. And both Alicia and Jackie will now report to Jeanette Kenny as the director of, I'm going to have to hit Jack. Jack, if we were in our board meeting room, actually I would be texting Jack and he would be just yelling out Jeanette's new title.
Continuous improvement.
Thank you, Jack, data and continuous improvement. So Jeanette will oversee those areas with additional responsibility. She'll now be a director. And again, the purpose of this is, is to provide in our team some more verticality as people assume additional responsibilities, but also build some verticality into the organizational chart that will help us attract and retain our talent. And then the final revision is to reclassify Mrs. Davis's title from communications director to chief communications officer. Krista is a vital member of our district leadership team and does work commensurate with the work of our chiefs, chief administrative services, chief operations officer and chief academic officer. And I think it's important to have her have that same title because the work she does as a member of our leadership team is every bit as, is every bit as valuable to our organization. Next slide, please. We have one administrator on the agenda. Dr. Kristen Bordage is being recommended for supervisor curriculum, replacing Bill Warfield. Dr. Bordage is previously the dean of the College of Education at Ottermind College. She has worked extensively with us to support our, our staff through professional development. We've got a lot of partnerships with Ottermind. Dr. Bordage was very instrumental in developing our Grow Your Own program for recruitment of minority students and education to Ottermind. So we're really, really pleased and honored to have her become part of our team. And then you have two additional items on there as Jeff indicated, our GMP for Elementary 16 with that, for the amount of 14,632,000. And then we are approving, recommending the approval of contract amendment with Fanning Howey so they can start designing Elementary 17 and, and Middle School 6. So I think that's all I have. Next slide, Lamont. Let's take any additional questions you might have. Okay.
I don't see any, and then I know we're going to be circling back, Mr. Rafe.
Yeah, I might, I might have stole the thunder of the discussion, but you know.
That's okay. That's okay. All right, let's move on into our treasurer's report, Mrs. Hatfield.
Thank you. Just two quick items that I would like to say before I kind of dive into what we have to update you on for the agenda items. One is, again, just giving Mrs. Lenko and her team, you know, a proud ovation. I had an opportunity to help them, one of the mornings that they were preparing the meals and just kind of see how they are in action, what's going on, how fast they were able to put those meals together and their professionalism. And you know, quite honestly, I don't think anyone in there had anything but a smile on their face and were giggling and, you know, enjoying themselves doing the work. So thank you, Bethany. I think her, she, she and her team truly enjoyed what they were doing. It was awesome. The other item that I would like to just mention real quickly is being a part of the first town hall meeting discussion the other night. It was very eye opening, very respectfully and professionally done. And I'm so proud of our equity and inclusion team for the work that they did and proud of the community that joined in and how they interacted with each other. So I'm excited for that update. I think you guys will be very happy with what we were, what they were able to accomplish just in one setting so far. So we look forward to the additional town halls that are coming up. With that, I'll move into the treasurer items. Just a quick update for you on the Federal Cares Act funding. Originally, we had talked about, or the state had released that they would be returning some of our foundation funds. Olentangie was eligible to receive about $2 million back from the funds that they reduced in early, gosh, when did they do that? Beginning of May for the end of fiscal year 20. And so House Bill 164 was to take some federal funding that was received for Cares Act and give some of that proceeds back to schools. So we did receive about $2 million. We actually saw it come into the bank account yesterday. So that's a good update for us. Originally, I had thought that it would be received as federal funding, meaning that it would be set aside in a separate fund for us as the original Cares Act funding was. However, it is general fund dollars and it will appear in the five-year forecast online, 1.035 unrestricted grants and aid. So that's a good thing. We are working on putting together a model update from our May forecast to not only reflect this, but take a look at our planning once we have firm action items for returning to school and how all of that fits together. So we're excited to have that opportunity to add that revenue back in to some extent. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, we, we had already taken care of returning the 1.7 million that our foundation fund wouldn't cover from the $3 million cut. So we have a bit of an in and out that looks awkward. You'll see in our May financials that we, our unrestricted grants and aid is about $1.7 million over what is expected because we are, we were anticipating having to owe that back to the state in full. It shows that we have more revenue than anticipated, which is going to be a little awkward in the statements. But what we'll see then in June is that 1.7 will have been returned to the state. We will receive the $2 million debt they gave back. And so in June, you'll see the $2 million figure come up as overestimated receipts for. for this fiscal year. I'm sorry, that's a little complicated, but it was just timing that it all fell through the way that it did. We wanted to ensure that as we move through fiscal close, we were responsible for returning any funds that we were originally requested to return and that it would get booked in the current fiscal year. So it'll look a little odd on the monthly financial statements, but we'll make sure that we document that well. In terms of general economics, we know that non-auto sales tax has not come back to levels from pre-COVID estimations. However, the deterioration of that state level revenue is starting to halt. So it's starting to kind of level out. We're not exactly sure if it will increase or what will happen with that as we move forward into June. So we want to keep our eyes on that and hopefully that'll give us more indication of where we will be for FY21 funding. No information has been given about that yet. And we are anticipating that instead of knowing in July, we might not find out about FY21 funding until August. And then we have several action items for the board this evening. Very busy, very busy month for the board. But we have our final fiscal year 20 amended appropriations. Each month, we bring forward budget changes that need to be made so that we are in compliance with accounting and Ohio revised code standards. This is our final amended appropriation for the fiscal year. We also have permanent appropriations for fiscal year 21. Previously, when we provided you with the five-year forecast update, there was a budget that was associated with that. That was all general fund and it was general fund budgets by object. Permanent appropriations while still budgets also include all of the other funds. So the 006 fund, as Ms. Lanko referred to earlier for food service, the 200 funds for student activities, our 003 fund for permanent improvement and so on. So that's why it's a little different and why we bring it in two pieces. We want to make sure that we are closer to where we are with our current fiscal balances so that we understand what we might have available to us in the coming FY21. Our May financials, as we kind of discussed as we went through the financial aid, or the, excuse me, the state aid. Again, we will see that 1.7 kind of sitting there as being over expected for revenue that will wash out next month. And in June, we will end the fiscal year showing that we are $2 million ahead of our expected revenue, only because of the, the changes that the state has made and how much of a reduction we would see to our funding there. Board meeting minutes, we have both May board meeting minutes forward for compliance and Ohio revised code purposes. We also have two donations we would like to recognize this evening. We have a cello of Yola and a music stand from Raimi and Lori. I believe it's Kayat, forgive me if I've mispronounced your name, but that donation has been made to Orange High School. And a $1,000 school lunch debt donation from the United Way of Delaware County to Olentangy Local Schools. And that is for student debt specifically, not necessarily the 006 fund as a whole, but for those students who had an outstanding balance on their lunch accounts. So we're very grateful for those donations. And of course, we are thankful for all of our community members who have been very active and supportive through this time of COVID closure and throughout the year. We also have a renewal for our milestone benefits contract. Milestone Benefits is the district's insurance broker. They have been with us now for five years and we have truly enjoyed working with them and developing that partnership. The current three-year contract is due to expire at the end of the month, but we have had exceptional service from Milestone. They have facilitated RFP services for medical, dental, vision, and our life insurance coverages that we offer as benefits to our staff. They are helpful in issuing updates for HSA and FSA regulations, not only IRS regulations and how we have to report it as a district, but also what the individuals can and can't do with that and help us to provide education to our staff so they're using those tools appropriately. They have been sending us COVID updates on a regular basis. They help us monitor our claims dollars on a monthly basis so that we can be notified if there might be any high claimants coming up or if there's just a spike in general services provided. They're helping get that information updated for us. And in the coming months, we should be able to get more data on how the use of PCPs, the use of telemedicine and things like that, that services that we anticipate will go up a little bit due to COVID. But we'll have more information about how that'll impact our, our annual claims dollars in the coming months. And again, they just provide excellent customer service, not only to the treasurer's department, but to the individuals who work for Olentangy School Districts. They're able to call in and get help if they have claim mitigation that they need or just general basic questions about how to use the insurance. They've been very helpful to our staff and we've not gotten any comments or feedback from the staff about not getting help. That's, you know, or somebody being disrespectful or anything of that nature. So we're very grateful for that partnership. I'm also pleased that they offered the same rate that they gave, that they offered us in 2017, that rate for the next three years. So for, through the next three-year contract in 2023, that's really kind of unheard of. As you think about insurance industries, typically costs go up, up, up. Even if we do RFPs and we do shopping and we do things of that nature, we can minimize that amount by which it grows. But traditionally, it will grow just because that industry. So I'm very pleased that they offered us a three-year contract to hold the annual cost at $54,000 a year for all of those services that they have provided. So we're pleased with that and we would like to continue that partnership within our community. And lastly, we have recommended a transfer of 1.5 million from the general fund to the food service fund. That was included in the five-year forecast. We discussed it briefly as we talked about the lunches and breakfast that Bethany and her team were serving our students over, not just the end of the school year, but then through part of those 49 days, a little bit extended services. And so what we know right now is even with their federal funding of that $250,000 plus that Mrs. Lanko referenced, their current balance is about $37,000 and change. Typically, when they close the year, they're in a $1.2 million range. So what's hap, going to happen if we don't take this transfer over to the food service fund is they won't be able to get product and the things that they need in time to open and be ready for our students. There won't be a cash flow there that will support the preparatory work that they need to bring students in. Should the board approve this and then decide that, you know, for whatever reason our operational expectations change, whether that's students coming back part-time or students coming back more remotely and the food service department may or may not need that quite that much or may not need it at all, we can always take board action item in the fall to move those funds back to the general fund. So I think it's, it, it will help food service become prepared. It will help Ms. Lanko and her team not have to worry about cash flow items and be prepared to bring our students back and our staff back prepared and ready to go. So those are the action items that we have for you. Are there any, any questions regarding those items?
Ms. Hatfield, I'm not seeing any hands up.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any public participation this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, well, then I would like to invite Mr. Rafe back to discuss his board action items if you see fit, Mr. Rafe. Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was waiting for the slide. I'm looking, we get the sign of the wrong side. This one says inclusive excellence strategic objective. Do you want, do we have a slide for the action items?
That's what was up during Mrs. Hatfield's report and that was your action.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Yeah, so I, I know, I'm sorry for, I did cover that extensively in my superintendent's report. I thought it was important to get that out there. And then also, but also put this on the agenda as a discussion item in case there are other specific questions related to any of the items. Like I said before, the career technical education is something we do every year, ever since Ohio Department of Education passed, has made that ability to offer career technical education classes in grade seven and eight. The supplemental contract provision is, is what we believe a legally, legal necessity. And then obviously the raises for the employees noted there. So, Mr. King, I'll take your question.
Thank you. It's actually a comment. I appreciate your conversation and what you're doing with, as you say, the verticality. I know that this has been brought up before in the years past with especially, excuse me, Roger and Kevin have both talked about creating that verticality for retention and bringing people into the system. So I just applaud that decision to move that forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to piggyback off of what Mr. King said. I concur and I think it's important to note that part of our strategic plan is to retain talent and, and, you know, to grow our talent. So I know that this is an integral part of that. So we applaud those efforts and I know you have more changes in the future in mind. So we look forward to that.
Well, you know, our priority, I mean, with regards to staffing, we obviously, we're always going to be as lean as we possibly can, but also try to address areas where, where we need to dedicate resources because we're, you know, I guess what you, what you spend money on is what you care, what you probably care the most about. So, you know, we say all the time, we try to keep our class sizes as small as possible because that's where we want to spend the most of our, the majority of our money. So, you know, we're going to continue to try to target resources where we think they're What other questions do you have? Yes, Mrs. Davis.
Is this for general questions now?
Yeah.
Okay. Because there's been a lot of questions on social media about hiring practices of minority candidates and I didn't know if you wanted to review those practices or?
We will be, Mr., actually, we have, in the, in the next discussion item, Mr. Meyer is going to talk extensively about that, you know, that, what we do to attract and retain minority talent. So if it's, if it's okay to wait.
Because I had asked Mr. Meyer for that information.
Yes, he is. He is. We, we do have an over-under on how long it may take him to talk about all they do in HR to attract and retain. We have a private over-under going. I don't want him to speed up because it is a very, very, very important topic, but it's a lot. I mean, he, they've been doing a lot and, and we've had, we believe, some success in that area. It's, it's just, it's, it's a battle to get talent. Mr. Anybody, Mr. O'Brien, I know you really want to say something about that, me recommending somehow putting a board action item on him that somehow recommends a salary increase for me. It's all right. I, I know there's, my wife's on the agenda too, so it's, it's okay. A tough one for you.
I'm good. I'm fine.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. All right, I guess we'll be moving on, Mrs. Patrick.
I guess we will. While that, we have a, we have a special guest this evening. Dr. Jackie Merkel, who is our supervisor of equity and inclusion, is joining us to have a conversation about inclusive excellence and strategic objective. And I know that she also hosted our first town hall meeting last night. So welcome, Dr. Merkel. I'm new.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I am very excited to be here to talk about the work of the equity and inclusion team on our action plan that we created in 2018 and provide an update. Yes, Mark?
I thought I was starting.
Oh, okay. Would you like to start?
I have.
Hand up, not your real hand.
Sorry, yes. I know I look, I look a lot better. Actually, Jackie, I'm going to start. Todd's going to go next and then you are going to finish it up because you have the bulk of the work, okay?
Sounds good.
As always, as we know, you do the bulk of the work. So, Mrs. Patrick and members of the Board of Education, I do want to really, I want to thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion tonight. As you mentioned, we did have the town hall meeting, which was a great discussion last night, a great presentation. Heather Cole did a great job moderating that. But I think it's really critical that we have this ongoing conversation for our district, our staff, our students, and most importantly, our community at large. And while I think we've done very much in the strategic plan priority of promoting a culture of inclusive excellence, we certainly have more to do. So, you know, I'd like to highlight the following points. I'm going to start off with the help of Todd Meyer, our chief operations officer, and then I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Merkel, our supervisor of equity inclusion, at least for the next hour or so. Then she's going to be assistant director of equity inclusion. But please know, the district is fully committed to employing a diverse staff and creating a safe environment for all of our students. And before we move on here, I'd like to call on Todd to share this brief overview of our hiring practices as it relates to recruiting and retaining diverse staff members. He usually does this in August and he's going to have a more detailed report in August. But right now, at this critical juncture, I'd like to bring Todd in to, to talk about what we're doing with minority hiring.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rafe. And, you know, first, I want to thank you for your commitment towards this very important goal for the district as well as the Board of Education. As you know, as our student demographic continues to change, it's important for us to look at bringing more diverse staff into the district. And actually, this has been, I just finished my fifth year in the role and this has been extremely rewarding work collaborating with Dr. Merkel and her team, our curriculum department, obviously, the people in my office, in the HR office, as well as the diversity committee, our diversity committee subcommittee and community members. I appreciate all of the ideas that come, whether it's to Mr. Rafe or directly to my office. We appreciate the work of the diversity committee and the recommendations that come through the diversity committee. And we're, I'm personally proud of the progress that we've made, but completely understand that we have a long way to go in this area to continue to attract and retain quality, diverse candidates, because it's important for our students to have staff, people of color in front of them in our classrooms. So, you know, just over the last two years, we, of the new hires, of the new hires, 28.5% of our new administrative hires were diverse. 9.5% of our certified staff, new hires, were diverse and 12.3% of our classified staff were diverse. So again, you know, relatively speaking, when I talk to people across the central Ohio and across the state, those are pretty good numbers. But like I said, we're committed to continuing the work and to continue to recruit high-quality diverse talent. You know, I was thinking about this, it seems like almost yesterday, about five years ago, where the chair of the diversity recruiting subcommittee made an appointment with me, probably my first month on the job five years ago, and brought a list of recommendations to the meeting and sat down and had a very, very good conversation and looked at the list of recommendations. And, you know, I started going down the list and I was like, we can do that, we can do that, we can do that. And, and they were such good recommendations in, in. they were such good recommendations and things that absolutely we could implement here in Olandeji and we should implement in Olandeji. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through a list of some targeted efforts that we currently use to attract diverse candidates. Like I said, a lot of these have been suggested by staff members, diversity committee members, administrators, community members. And so we've taken these and obviously made them our own for Olandeji and developed strategies. And some of, some of these have morphed into, I mean, obviously, going through the last five years, we've looked at some of these things and we saw areas of improvement where we could improve and we continue to do that. So the first one is probably what I think is most effective because networking in, whether it's in business, whether it's in education, whether it's in college, coming out of college, trying to find a job, obviously networking is extremely important. So we have a diverse candidate referral form that we use in the district to identify diverse talent from around the state and quite frankly, around the country. So what we do is we send this form out to various stakeholders across the community to ask for diverse referrals for us to take a look at their credentials once we get the form. So, you know, and again, we've done this for a few years, but this year we were more intentional about sending that form out because we wanted to specifically target and send a message with the importance of recruiting diverse candidates in the, in the district. So first, we put this in our administrative updates. So to, so to all of our certified and classified administrators, got a copy of this form and again, asking them for, through their networks, if they know of diverse talent for us to consider for employment. Next, what we did was we crafted a separate email that the principals sent specifically to their staff and our supervisors to their staff with the diversity referral form. And then, thirdly, we also then crafted an individual email that we sent to our parents through our building distribution list. So it was a specific email just promoting hiring diverse candidates with that form attached. And one other thing we did to improve the process is we streamlined that now. So all of those forms go back to somebody, a support staff in my office. And then she collects all of those forms and as they come in, we have our assistant directors, for the most part, will review and contact those individuals individually to discuss employment opportunities based on qualifications. So we kind of, we, we take a look at that based on qualifications. Another intentional thing that we do, every year, I visit each of the principals and departments because we start talking about staffing for the next year in the, in the winter. So those winter staffing meetings, we cover anticipated enrollment, anticipated openings, resignations, retirements. So we talk about all of those questions. But what's real important is we drill down the student demographic and match with the teacher demographic in each of our buildings and we identify the gaps across our schools. So we want to be purposeful about that with our principals and supervisors because we want them to look at the importance of, again, trying to address that gap across our buildings with hiring top diverse talent. Another thing recommended from the Diversity Subcommittee on Recruitment and Retention was that we needed to widen our net. No longer could we just rest on our laurels that we're Olandeji and we're just gonna go into our backyard and hire people. So they were very committed and interested in casting a wider net. And that includes going to many, many college job fairs across the state and states contiguous to Ohio, as well as a couple through NEMNET. NEMNET's a national resource organization committed to assisting schools and organizations in the recruiting of diversity teachers. So NEMNET puts on probably three or four networking job fairs throughout the country. And then also the historically black colleges and universities tapping into that as a recruiting tool as, as far as putting that in our job fair structure of attending one of those job fairs at one of those universities. So we have done that. So we've been to places like Washington DC, Atlanta, Chicago, some historically black colleges and universities, Tennessee State, West Virginia State University, obviously Central State here in the state of Ohio. So that again was a recommendation and we do put the resource into our budget to attend those job fairs. You know, this year, obviously with the COVID-19 pandemic, that put a little damper in our plans. And one of, one of the other things that we're extremely proud of is the internal job fair that we have here in Olandeji every year in March. The pandemic hit like right when we were getting ready to schedule, probably a week before, I think, we went, went out of school and the next week was gonna be our job fair, which we had invited over about 175 applicants from across the country. And, and many of those were diverse candidates from referrals that we received. But to the credit of my department, we said, you know what? We have to have this job fair. So all of our administrators are a part of that. So again, a credit to them. All of their scheduled interviews, they typically do, each administrator does about six interviews in a day, we were able to do those virtually. So we were still able to at least do that virtually to conduct those interviews. So, you know, th- those are, as far as the job fairs, and, and again, extremely important because it's so competitive to find diverse talent. And we're competing. All of the school districts are competing. It is a goal for many, many, many school districts in, in the state and across the country. So, you know, one other thing that we just implemented two years ago, a suggestion from the Diversity Subcommittee was, okay, if you're gonna go to all these job fairs, can we use teachers of color or administrators, administrators of color to team up with who's going to the job fairs? And absolutely 100% great idea. So we did solicit interest from our teachers of color and obviously all of our administrators and administrators of color about attending job fairs because again, like I said, you know, we, we probably go to 25 to 30 per year on a normal year. So a lot of interest, which was good. So one thing that we wanted to do is, you know, one thing I like about Olandeji is the systemic alignment that we have within the organization. So whether it's curriculum, whether it's hiring, you know, whether it's assessments, it is unbelievable how large our organization is and the systemic alignment that we have. So again, what we wanted to do was we created a training session for all staff members who were gonna go out and recruit because number one, they're representing Olandeji. And number two, we had to stress the importance of our hiring strategies and identifying top diverse talent. And obviously, high-quality candidates in general. So my office put together and that's led by my assistants, Nancy and Jen, for our principals and directors and obviously teachers who go out interviewing, put that training together about those types of things and, and, and talk through a little bit about the appreciation of diversity and our demographics and implicit bias throughout the hiring process. So those things are covered in that training. So from that, then last year, Dr. Merkel and her team worked in collaboration with Nancy Fries and Jen Iceman out of my office to create implicit bias training for all of our administrators, which will happen next year. So they spent this year putting that together and that is part of the professional development plan for next year to make sure that that, every administrator in our organization will go through that. Another really good, I think, pipeline for us is our district pool sub and our substitute program because again, we're all in Tangi and a lot of people want to work here and we can't hire everybody we interview for jobs. So we have a large staff, over 2,600 employees. So with 2,600 employees, you're gonna have absences throughout the year. So we need the substitute pool to cover classrooms or job functions when staff members are sick. So that really allows us, it allows our principals and supervisors to get hands-on experience daily with our subs throughout the year. And we have many, like I said, our pool sub program, those subs work every day in our district and we have many long-term sub opportunities in the district too. So that, that helps us with identifying some really good talent through our substitute pool subs and sub program. Another recommendation from the Diversity Subcommittee was to broaden the advertising that we do for our district. So obviously, we advertise through our website, but we also advertise through the Professional, the Ohio Department of Education and Professional, Professional Associations throughout the state, but also the HBCU Career Magazine and Diversity and Education Magazine. We put ads in both of those publications every year. And I forget which one, but one of them has a database when we, I think it's the Diversity and Education Magazine, where we put those potential job postings in there. They also go out electronically to their network. So again, that was a recommendation. I knew a couple of years ago, a lot of universities are using what they call Handshake. And Handshake is a talent recruitment platform that is transforming college recruiting. The platform encourages a diverse and inclusive culture for smarter recruiting. So we're able to put our profile and information into Handshake that again, promotes our goal of hiring diverse talent. And the last, I have a stat here. So we've increased our network and connection, connection by 35% over the past two years. And again, that's a tribute to the support staff and staff in my office managing that. A lot of times we, from my office, Mrs. Fries and I are invited to universities to go out and present about Olandeji. So absolutely, for the most part, we take people up on that because anytime we can get in front of College of Education students to tell our story because it's really good. And number two, it allows us the opportunity, again, to network and to identify some top diverse talent when we, when we can do that. So most recently, we've done presentations at Ohio State University, Otterbine and Ohio Wesleyan. The, also, this is a recommendation from the Subcommittee five years ago, they said, hey, could you put some resource and a little money into your presence when you go to these job fairs? When I showed up on the scene, we had a vinyl three by five banner that wasn't even the Olandeji blue and it basically said, Olandeji School. So anyways, over the course of five years and especially with our new branding, we have made major overhaul on how we present ourselves at job fairs and as well as our literature has totally been redone. And again, with information and the goal in mind to access our application a lot easier. So for example, on our brochure now, there's a QR code. You just put your cell phone right to the QR code and it goes right to our application. So obviously with the generation graduating, they're very, very technology, technologically savvy. So that's important and it gets it gets candidates right to our job application. And I forgot to mention too, when I was, when we were talking about advertising vacancies, the use of social media and work with our, collaboration with our communications department has really, especially with our classified staff, has been tremendous in recruiting candidates to come to our job fairs, especially in our classified ranks where we're, and we, we created a whole process with the communication department. And it's very process oriented as far as when we're gonna have the job fair and then we work backwards from the job fair and all of the things we do and their frequency that we put things on social media. So that's been really, really good. And then the develop, Mr. Rafe did mention the Grow Your Own incentive program with Otterbine University. And this is kind of taken on, taken on over like nationally. A lot of school districts are looking and partnering with universities where they can tap into their own students, students of color. And when you recognize students in the hall, and I was a high school principal for 14 years. So yeah, you see students who, you recognize and who would make a great teacher as the heart of a teacher. And, and a lot of times it's just about encouraging those individuals to say, hey, have you ever thought about that? And with us, we have Teacher Academy in, in Olandeji. So that's an, an added advantage when we can get some of our students of color in that Teacher Academy program, which then helps to create a pipeline to Otterbine and to the College of Education. I know Jackie, Dr. Merkel's gonna talk more about that program when she comes on. And then lastly, just a couple more points. And I think Dr. Merkel, she went to the NAME Conference and I think it was about a year ago. That's the National Association for Multicultural Education. And they were having a recruiting diverse talent workshop and, and I think this is where it came back from, but the suggestion was, hey, can we be a little more explicit in our job applications about promoting and recognizing the goal of recruiting diverse talent from diverse backgrounds. So we, the following statement we've added to our administrative certified, classified and supplemental job postings. And this, I'm gonna read the statement. "Success for Olandeji Schools is integrally linked to how well we value, engage and affirm the rich diversity of our school and community. As such, we actively recruit top talent from diverse backgrounds. This creates an environment of inclusive excellence and global awareness that benefits our students and staff. Join our team." So, you know, again, that's something overtly and explicitly that we can do to promote, again, put that message out there about recruiting diverse talent. And, and just a couple other things I want to end with this because I was sitting in a conference last fall. So the HR professionals across the state, typically we have two or three conferences a year in state. And like I said, everybody, this is an important goal for everybody. Again, our, our, the stats, I think it's about 50% of the students in public schools across the country are students of color. And again, in Olandeji, we continue to cre- increase our minority population. So it's extremely important for us obviously to pull it, to recruit teachers of color in the district to put in front of our kids. But I, I just want to share a stat with you because this was, and, and we, we all have this goal and we all, we, we talk a lot and it's frustrating because the pool is so shallow. And there's a lot of different reasons for that. But this gentleman, he was from Fairfield down in Cincinnati Dayton area. And so the latest data we have from the colleges and universities, 2015 and 16, showed this. 12,864 students in the field of education were white. And these are grades are from freshman to senior college, right? So from a freshman declared major in education or you're major in education to the seniors, 12,864 were white. So again, in that freshman to seniors, 1,644 people of color. That year, 411 people of color graduated from college in the state of Ohio. And you guys all know there's 610 school districts and in those 610 school districts, over 3,500 schools, many of whom are working to recruit diverse staff. And again, I, this is not an excuse and I don't want to, I don't want it to come across as an excuse because it's extremely important. because it's extremely important that we continue this important work, but it's a challenge. And I go back to the numbers that I uh presented at the beginning of this presentation. We're extremely proud of the work that we're doing to identify obviously first the need and to um recruit diverse talent across our district, so administratively certified and classified. You know, our, our efforts over the past two years have yielded forty six new staff members who are people of color to the district. And that's a good thing. Again, like I said, as our student population continues to become more diverse, it's critical that we continue our work on recruiting top diverse talent. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
He still has a question for you before we switch presenters, Mr. Um, Mr. Meyer.
Um, Mr. Meyer, how many um certified spots do you still have left to fill the school year? Is that tends to be what people are looking to um so that students can see, you know, teachers in the classroom that look like them?
So uh we probably have, um, I'm just going through real quick, probably a half dozen vacancy, teaching vacancies still.
So like six?
Yeah, yeah.
We have left?
Right.
Okay.
But we've already, uh, I mean, you've already, I mean, what, do you have no offhand how many diverse candidates you've hired for next year already?
Again, they declare on the EEOC once we hire them, so we'll, we're starting to go through that data. I do know, uh, yes, I do know we've hired some diverse candidates. One thing that I also know is, again, it's very competitive. We lost out on four diverse candidates um within the last month because they uh we had um a good recommendation from South Carolina. Her husband ended up not getting a job in Ohio, so they're not able to relocate. We offered her a job. We offered another um gentleman a job who obviously got offered by a couple other districts. And he decided to stay closer to home. Another gentleman we offered a job to, same thing. It was between uh, I think it, it came down to coaching um where he went. And then uh young lady, um, we offered a job to uh took another, actually we're going to get any, get her in the interview process and she took a job somewhere else, so. But I will, in August, I will have those that, the complete data on um how many diverse staff in, in all of those there. And again, three areas, certified uh administrators and classified.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for you, Mr. Meyer, about how many applications do we receive in a year for employment?
It's hard to tell in a year because we keep them open for eighteen months.
Okay.
And then we deactivate them, but we had last year, and I'll report this out, I'll, I'll, I'll report the number. But I want to say last year we had at least five thousand applications in our system.
So that's a lot of applications, but are we able to tell of that, of that number, how many are diverse candidates?
No, no, we don't, we don't ask that question upfront. Because there uh obviously could be some um discriminatory laws uh related to that. So we've been advised by legal counsel and EEOC not to ask that question on a job application as far as determining uh employment. So again, that's why that diversity referral program is so important for us. Because when we get those referrals, we do know that those individuals are diverse.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other virtual hands up, Mr. Rafe, if you want to um. Are we, are we on to Dr. Merkel?
No, I got a quick, I got a couple of things I want to, I want to add to this. I do, I am proud that uh I, I, we, we did hire this spring my first grow, grow our own. I had a conversation with a young uh student at Liberty High School in about two thousand eight. His, his mom was a guidance counselor in the city of Columbus. He was getting ready to go off to college and I was talking to him about his college major. He's an African American uh young man. And I said, I said, uh, Alan, um, what are you going to study when you go play football at University of uh Albany? And he said, criminal justice. And I said, you know, there's plenty of minorities who are in criminal justice. I said, you, you, we, we need minorities in education. I said, you got the heart of a teacher, your mom's a teacher, you, you've grown up, it's education's your family business. You need to be a teacher. Well, he thought he, he went off to, went, went off to college, got his degree, didn't like the job he got. His heart kept pulling him towards teaching and um ended up getting uh alternative license or license to teach physical education in um, he was at a career school and he actually had an alternative license. And um he kind of sent me an email this spring and said, you know, you told me about this um in a long time ago. And um I'm finally going to listen to your advice. And it, and so we got him in the application pool and I had three elementary principals fighting over him for an elementary physical education job. So um that's what it really takes is just seeing those people that have the heart of a teacher and encouraging them. Because you know, our, our minority students don't think about becoming teachers because they don't see them in front of them every day. And um we can do that. So I'm really encouraged that that's going to continue to happen. So um, you know, obviously this is, it's just been a tough, it's just been a tough week. You know, the national conversation has reignited our discussion about what more can and should be done to ensure equity for people of color. And a local conversation has begun about the uh experience of uh students in our district. We're all asking, we are all asking ourselves how we can do better, which is a core value of our district. So um, you know, uh with regards to the DRO LSD Instagram account and all the students on social media who have recently posted about negative experiences within the district, we hear you. We hear you. While we've been working to address these types of issues for years, you have shared experiences that make it clear, uh, we have much work left to do uh in this area. So um I'm sorry that those experiences have occurred uh and you deserve better. And um we're going to do everything possible to uh ensure that you who are currently with us uh will receive better. So um, again, we hear you. The recent events are causing us to reflect and determine how we can continue to advance our goal to ensure a culture of inclusive excellence. And uh make no mistake, we are actively exploring how we can grow from these events. It's important, however, to honor the great work that's been done uh by volunteers, students, staff in our district over the past decade, because this has been on our radar for a decade. This topic is not new to us uh and the urgency is not new. Our community deserves a clear understanding of who we are, what we believe and how we plan to get better. Our volunteer uh committee has been actively engaged with our, our district since two thousand and ten and has helped us to create a hiring system that prioritizes and values diverse staff. Our hiring process, as Mr. Meyer uh just talked about, benchmarks against model practices and meets or exceeds every expectation that we have to ensure equitable hiring practices. Anyone who's concerned that we're not doing enough, please join our diversity committee and continue to help us make every effort to ensure equitable practices. Uh, and additionally, we have a minority educator focus group, a group of teachers who comes together a couple of times a year to give feedback on recruitment intention, uh the recruitment and retention plan. Uh, Mr. Meyer, and offer ideas to improve. Uh, Mr. Uh Meyer has implemented nearly every idea suggested to date. Based on the committee's input and hard work, twelve months ago, we purchased over forty two thousand dollars worth of diverse text sets for our elementary classrooms to increase their availability uh in our schools. Because we value exposing students to diverse experiences and voices through literature. Um, we have now hosted sixth annual one community conferences to encourage dialogue and understanding around issues of race. The recent conferences have all included student panels and presentations because we care about understanding the experiences of our students and we believe we can and should learn from them. On the topic of student voice, we also started a cross building high school student equity committee that was able to only, unfortunately, only made able to meet once before the pandemic hit. But I have great confidence that Dr. Merkel and her team will employ them uh in the future. Mere days prior to the inappropriate post by one of our employees on the district Instagram channel, I held a planning meeting for staff, uh for staff professional development for the two thousand twenty one school year on matters of diversity in the classroom. We have since committed to an anti racism professional development for all certified, classified administrative staff members for all three professional, all three of our professional development days uh for the upcoming school year. Planning efforts will begin this summer to ensure the content is relevant, applicable to their role in the district and covers a variety of topics such as language, implicit and explicit bias uh and microaggression. Also, I've learned that some people may believe that the Juneteenth email last Friday was in an effort to counteract negative publicity from the Wednesday Instagram post. And that simply is not true. Uh, Dr. Merkel and her team, in fact, uh began crafting the extensively uh extensive body of work in the email in the thirty days of reflection calendar, weeks in advance of that post. So um uh we expect our virtual town hall meetings, uh the first of which was last night. And next um that happened last, this uh, I'm sorry, last night uh and the next coming weeks to be emotional. And we're seek, uh, but we're seeking this feedback. We're seeking this feedback directly because again, we are committed to grow and to be better. These are a few examples that I share to honor the efforts of individuals who have been get dedicated to growing Olentangie as a safe place for all students and to ensure our stakeholders that we haven't been caught off guard by the recent outcry. It is unacceptable to me that any student is treated poorly because of their race, their religion, their sexual orientation or national orientation. For years, we adopted a strategic plan that includes a goal, ensure a culture of inclusive excellence as, as mentioned at the beginning of my remarks. In collaboration with our diversity committee, we've created a fourteen point plan to make that goal meaningful and actionable. Annually, our supervisor of equity and inclusion, Jackie Merkel prepares a report on that progress. Jackie shared that report with me in early April and I intended to bring her to the board uh here in the spring. So uh I thought it would be appropriate for her to review that now uh so that we all have a current understanding of where we are and where we're going. So, Dr. Merkel, I turn it over to you uh to talk about the fourteen point plan.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. And thank you to the board for allowing me this forum tonight to, you know, provide an update on the work of the Equity and Inclusion Team. I'm really happy to be here sharing the progress that we've made over the last two years on this um fourteen point action plan that was adopted in two thousand eighteen. Um, next slide, please. So after meeting with the students, staff and community um two years ago, we crafted a fourteen point plan that had three prongs um to advance the work of equity and inclusion and inclusive excellence across the district. These three prongs are really commitments to our stakeholders. They're commitments to students, commitments to staff and commitments to our community. So I will go over each of the fourteen points tonight. And really, my goal is to provide an honest look for you at how far we've come and where we still need to go. Uh, next slide, please. So the first point is um acquiring additional curricular resources that represent diverse perspectives, backgrounds um and peoples. So in um twen- from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, I've kind of organized the um presentation where I talk about what we've done over the two years and then things that we're planning to implement two thousand twenty and beyond or, you know, areas where we still need help, we still need ideas for how to grow and how to move forward from what we've tried. So the curriculum team really has recognized um the existing gap in diverse resources for our students. Uh, one area that we saw to improve this was in our interactive read aloud text sets for students, which Mark just uh mentioned. Um, this led us to purchase um from kindergarten through fifth grade, the Fontis and Penel sets that incorporate a significant amount of diversity into the text. This diversity includes um diverse themes, images, as well as author diversity, which is very important. Additionally, after speaking with some teachers at uh Olentangie Academy, I noticed a gap in terms of providing students with resources to help them analyze historical and contemporary data in the area of diversity. This led to our district wide purchase of an application called Social Explorer, which allows students to look at census data and overlay interactive maps to see trends and draw conclusions around data points over time. And finally, the instructional technology team has begun a rubric for review digital content of which I am a part of that process. Um, this rubric will incorporate language around ensuring resources and applications do not draw on biases or promote stereotypes, as well as ensure that there are accessibility features that address a diverse range of student uh needs. So moving forward uh in two thousand twenty and beyond, uh we know that we can do more. Uh, prior to COVID, we had identified a diverse text um purchasing project for next year. The goal is to provide space for student voice and decision making in the text that we are purchasing for our libraries. This project will continue in conjunction with the Delaware County uh library system, as well as our library media specialist in the district. Secondly, we will be working with staff on our resource selections for classroom use, identifying gaps, looking for stereotypes and ensuring our materials have accurate and diverse representation. And lastly, the Equity and Inclusion Team has identified and will be purchasing diverse resources to support the Teaching of Pioneer Day in order to ensure a more complete and accurate history is taught to our students. Next slide, please. Um, the second action item was to revise core curriculum to increase learning opportunities related to diversity. There is much more to be done in the area of revising our core curriculum for diverse integration. So I'd, I'd like to start there. Um, one focal area over the past two years has been um actually our eighth grade social studies team. And we have undertaken work with Dr. Jeffries from the Ohio State University to integrate teaching around slavery and resistance into our eighth grade curriculum. For two thousand twenty and beyond, uh, we're really going to tackle this uh goal head on. And we're going to begin with a multi-year diversity curriculum project that has a goal of identifying opportunities within the standards in each content area to address diversity with our students. So this will span the K twelve spectrum and involve students and community members as well as um thought partners in the creation process. Additionally, as mentioned on the previous slide, um, we're going to work on creating materials in addition to purchasing resources that can help us revamp our curriculum around Pioneer Day at the elementary schools. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the third goal is to promote and promote individuality and diversity through annual school based events. Our goal was to see every building K through twelve host a diversity and multicultural event, either for students or students and families. We uh, meaning the curriculum team, supported principals through an administrative book study to aid their planning and idea generation process in two thousand eighteen with the goal of hosting an event for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Unfortunately, due to COVID nineteen, only twelve of our buildings were able to host their events prior to March seventeenth, as many of them plan their events for um spring, uh the spring quarter. One building, Heritage Elementary, I'd love to give a special shout out to because they pivoted and actually held their Taste of Heritage event virtually for families, creating different activities and learning opportunities throughout the week for families to engage in together. On top of managing the stress and everything that they had with teaching in the middle of a pandemic. So major kudos to you, Heritage Elementary, for taking that on. In addition to events, many buildings bring in speakers around diversity and inclusion for their students. Um, particularly author visits are very popular around diverse texts. And we have been lucky to host uh Jason Reynolds, for example, recently at Berlin High School. For two thousand twenty and beyond, we are planning on celebrating and integrating learning during Black History Month across all of our buildings. Um, while we know Black History is vital more than just February, we will be prioritizing that integration throughout the year as well as just in February. But it's extremely important to still have that month that is dedicated to learning to ensure visibility and support our Black students in the district. Additionally, we're going to work on, in addition to Black History Month, curating a list of resources and supports for all heritage months to ensure attention is paid to various diverse groups throughout the year. Uh, next slide, please. So. We had a goal of developing a student specific track at the annual one community conference. And so this was really important to us to ensure opportunities for continued engagement at all levels. We were successful in that in twenty nineteen, we heard really strong feedback when we hosted sessions for K through two. Three through five, six through eight and nine through twelve. Particularly our elementary sessions received very strong feedback. Unfortunately, our high school sessions were just sparsely attended. And one of the reasons that we realized that is despite the fact that there were many high school students there. They really wanted to be integrated into the adult sessions, those conversations with a variety of stakeholders because they have opportunities to speak to their peers all the time. But opportunities to talk to community leaders, to talk to their teachers, to hear from parents are not always readily available. So in twenty twenty, we dropped the high school sessions. And we just assumed, you know, that students, high school students, we advertised them to be integrated into those adult sessions. But we kept the middle school and elementary school. Sessions for engagement because it's really important to have that across the K twelve spectrum. A former student at one community presented last night at the town hall meeting, Noyanika Gupta. And she was actually a former one community presenter. And she asked for us to consider moving forward, expanding the experience of one community beyond just the single conference. To considering offering more student specific workshops, speakers and events in the building. You know, guided by the diversity club and the diversity liaison. So Noyanika, we really appreciate that recommendation. I added in here. A, a extra point that really wasn't one of the original fourteen points, but I really wanted to highlight it and Mark had. Brought this up as well and as he introduced and shift the conversation to me. But this point of developing a student equity steering committee. This was Heather Cole, our diversity coordinators. Really in her heart for the past couple of years that she wanted to get this going and we were lucky to be able to have students. Represented from all four high schools. We have about four students per high school sitting on that cross district committee. And they, they are there to really be able to help provide us with their experience, provide opportunities. And considerations for us at the district level to really have a scope of what's going on in the buildings to help figure out how we can support and align our work. And then also our goal is to empower them as leaders to continue using their voices and taking action in the building to make change. Heather has a goal to expand this equity steering committee. To also offer a middle school level committee. So we hope to see that soon. Next slide, please. So we revised, one of the goals was to revise student orientation practices to ensure that new students are aware of specific. Equity and inclusion expectations, activities and resources within the school. This is a goal that I believe that we can truly revisit and improve upon. So. In twenty eighteen, we successfully did this. We provided information to new students during freshman orientation regarding diversity and inclusion. Specifically, this included information about who the diversity liaison was, you know, how to join diversity committee. Sorry, diversity club, what type of programming diversity club did. And file information like how to report anonymously or, you know, with your name attached through the Stay Safe Speak Up helpline. In addition, over the past two years, two of the high schools have actively engaged the equity and inclusion team. To lead presentations for students during freshman orientation. And OHS even asked us to lead a learning session for their BCOM mentors in getting them ready for freshman orientation, which was a great experience. But while these efforts were a starting place, I really believe that we can revisit this goal and work in collaboration with building level. Level leadership and students to craft more education as a part of this freshman orientation experience. Next slide, please. The next goal is to review data on student access and outcomes in higher level courses to identify and eliminate inequities that may exist. In twenty eighteen, we started the AP Equity Identification Plan. So this involved analyzing racial and economic gaps in participation in our AP courses. Once those gaps were identified. We created a survey for students to help us to understand. What are some of the potential barriers to enrollment that our students might be facing? As well as to ask students to identify courses where they felt, you know, particularly engaged, particularly successful. To help to match them with a course where they might experience success for the first time in an AP. This allowed us to identify a list of students who. Are potential candidates for AP enrollment the following year that we may have missed. So in twenty eighteen, we were able to identify forty five students. And this last year, we were able to identify eighty students. I personally go through all of the information for each student and I create specific profiles for each one. With specific data, qualitative information, things that they added in the survey to personalize and put a face and a story to that information. I then bring those profiles and I meet with the counselors and the building administrators at each of the high schools. And we discuss each student one by one. They then kind of take that information and talk with those specific students during course request meetings. To, you know, encourage them and ask them about their goals, you know, if they think that an AP might be right for them and talk through some of what that could look like to help them get scheduled. So for twenty twenty and beyond, we're going to be working on identifying students for teacher academy. I apologize, it says new teacher academy. I'm also working on planning new teacher academy. It should just say teacher academy. So we're going to look at identifying students for teacher academy. And that was something that Todd had hit on in his presentation. We also would like to expand the equity plan. It was never intended to just look at AP offerings. We also would like to review access for our students to college credit, credit plus options, mentorship and DACC opportunities. Especially for our students from underrepresented backgrounds to ensure equity and enrollment. Additionally, conversations will continue to be ongoing with the supervisor of RTI, Morgan Nagle. To engage our administrators and teachers in conversations around building equity data literacy. So Morgan is a very passionate advocate for equity. She truly believes that there is not, you know, if there is one child, that that one child deserves our attention and our care and looking at their data. She's very knowledgeable, so I'm really proud to collaborate with her in this effort. Next slide, please. The next goal we have is empowering teachers by equipping them with strategies to address global and diverse topics in the classroom through ongoing professional development on culturally relevant practices. So we have, as Todd mentioned, we have been proud to attend the National Association for Multicultural Education Conference over the last two years. Sorry, not two years, few years. And every year that we've gone since probably twenty fifteen, we have presented every single year alongside teachers at that conference representing Olentangy. In various states throughout the country. We always ensure that we take a handful of teachers with us as well as some administrators. We have engaged in learning together at that conference and seen some incredible changes in practice of our educators who attend. One of note is actually a teacher at Orange Middle School who came back and worked with me. To lead an OPDA course around teaching for social justice in the world language. And has since undertaken his own curriculum revamp project with a fellow German teacher in his building. In addition to that. There, there are a lot of OPDA courses that the equity and inclusion team offers in addition to, you know, the rest of the offerings of the curriculum team. So some of these that have been offered over the last couple of years include. Matthew Kay, our keynote speaker from one community, a book study around his text, Not Light But Fire, How to Lead Meaningful Race Conversations in the Classroom. We also have hosted two co equity cohorts of teachers to build their confidence and competency in. Teaching for equity in the classroom. We've hosted two sessions of critical media literacy to help teachers really unpack the media that they're sharing with students, the representation in there. And help them to understand what they're seeing. We have partnered with Kaleidoscope Youth Center to have Amanda come and lead. A LGBTQ course of how to support our students from the LGBTQ background. And myself and Rachel Dobney, high school gifted coordinator have led a course around diverse text set creation. So that's just in the last. In the last two years. In addition, the equity and inclusion team routinely leads sessions at one community think tank and our professional development days. One of our largest offered sessions has been widely attended has been on the topic of facilitating difficult conversations in the classroom. We have also supported particular buildings through staff meetings. Last year, Shannon Griffin, our diversity K twelve chair, led a diverse book tasting for our elementary teachers at Glen Oak to help diversify their collections. For twenty twenty and beyond, one of our very own OLSD teachers, Jessica Selway spoke last night at the town hall meeting regarding her passion. For seeing required PD for all staff around diversity and anti racism. This is something that we are committing to, as Mark mentioned before I started. We're going to commit to leading this for next year with admin certified and classified staff all being involved. We hope to bring in experts to lead sessions of the PD and collaborate across stakeholder groups to create other portions of the training together. This should, will focus on implicit bias, microaggressions, explicit racism, anti racism, and developing skills for staff to stop discrimination at school. It will also focus on how to lead age appropriate conversations in the classroom because this looks very different at kindergarten, fifth grade, as it would in a twelfth grade classroom. Additionally, we are proud to say that as of this morning, we will be sending thirty five teachers to the virtual teaching Black History Conference at the end of July. I had originally intended to send ten, but we had such an outpouring of interest that I said, we're going to send them all. So we have over thirty five teachers that will be joining. The equity and inclusion team as a part of that virtual experience. Out of the Carter Center in Missouri. We will also be expanding our OPDA offerings this year. We are working on an inclusive excellence mini credentialing program through OPDA that Heather Cole is currently creating for teachers. Lastly, we would like to highlight that six of our OLSD teachers were invited to take part. In the Ohio State's first K twelve institute on teaching difficult subjects, which is a year long cohort that has started a couple of months ago. Next slide, please. The next goal is around training teachers to leverage current curriculum resources to support global and diverse classroom learning experiences. So along with our goal of acquiring additional curricular resources to support diversity and inclusion. It's important that we train our staff members adequately to utilize those resources to support and engage our students. So this year. We focused on training our diversity liaisons with our resource called Culture grams. And this is a K twelve resource that allows students to dive into different aspects of, different aspects of culture, including interviews from people from different countries. As well as news articles, just like a variety of different resources in there. And we kind of leveraged to train the trainer experience where we talked them through the resource and then we asked them to bring that information back and train their staff on how to leverage it in, in their classrooms. For twenty twenty and beyond, we know there's a large opportunity to continue working here that Culture grams is just one of the many resources we have. Specifically, we would like to provide training around our resources facing history and ourselves. As well as Social Explorer, which was that data visualization tool that I mentioned earlier that was acquired just prior to COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. So we, this goal is to continue to develop strategies to recruit and retain diverse teaching candidates. So I know that Todd has talked extensively about this and thank you so much for doing that. I wanted to elaborate on a couple of additional points that I have been integrally involved in supporting. The first is the, we, Jack Fetti and I co wrote a grant with Kristen Bordage. At Otterbine University through the Ohio Department of Education. And it's called a human capital grant that really focuses on building and grow your own pipeline of teachers within OLSD. Through this grant, we will work on identifying interested students who want to become teachers and rolling and enrolling them in teacher academy. This process will ensure that students from racially ethnically and linguistically diverse backgrounds are represented. As many of our teacher academy classes have been predominantly white for years. So from there, students have the ability to earn once they graduate from. Olentangy and go come through our teacher academy program. They have the ability to earn significant scholarships to Otter, Otterbine University's teacher education program. These scholarships, including the Teaching Talent Award and the Multicultural Teaching Award. Really have the ultimate goal of helping us to build a pipeline of diverse teachers that are interested in coming back to teach in our OLSD community. As Todd also mentioned, but I'd like to speak to these, these points directly. We, Jen, Nancy and I have created implicit bias training for all administrators to go through for next year. I also created for this year, a version of that training for all of our athletic coaches to go through. So any new athletic coaches that were hired this year. Have gone through that implicit bias and microaggressions training. We also, as Todd mentioned, revamped our job post language to ensure our commitments to equity and inclusion were clearly communicated. We've revised our interview and screener questions to incorporate competency for diversity for all candidates. And additionally, I attended a Nemnet recruitment workshop that provided our HR team with a lot of additional ideas for recruitment and retention moving forward. One additional idea for twenty twenty and beyond that we have right now is to. Think about a goal of having any teachers that are interviewing on building level teams. To go through an implicit bias training as well if they would like to sit on the hiring panels in their building in addition to their teacher, to their principals. Next slide, please. This goal is focused on creating building specific parent engagement opportunities so that all parents can be heard. Honestly, on this goal, we haven't made a lot of progress in the district. In terms of accomplishing this in a district wide fashion. While there are a couple of buildings who either have a diversity focused parent group or are working on starting one this summer, this largely is not in place. We have a goal of working towards ensuring all buildings establish parent groups moving forward. To ensure that community voices are heard and provided. As a space to problem solve solutions together collaboratively. One of our OLSD parents, Kara Randolph, spoke at our town hall meeting last night. And really echoed the sentiment about the need for parent committees at the building level. Another idea last night was shared by a community member, Kristy Thompson at the town hall. About even possibly thinking about establishing a diversity chair position with PTOs. This is a great conversation for us to get started with the PTOs as well. So I'm looking forward to initiating that conversation. Next slide, please. We had a goal of revising the student handbook to reflect a consistent approach to discipline for occurrences of discrimination, hate and bigotry. Immediately after our students came to the board meeting in twenty eighteen, our handbook committee began working on revisions. To ensure more specific language was included around addressing the use of racist sexist and abusive language and behaviors. This included language. This language and behavior. Will result in a suspension and the language was also updated to say could possibly lead to an expulsion. So. That language was quickly adopted and implemented for the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen year academic year and was done so with a sense of urgency. In addition, the district undertakes an annual policy and student handbook review. I have participated in this process multiple times, including this year where. I worked with a member of communications to create a more gender neutral dress code policy that will be implemented this upcoming. We can definitely do more work in reviewing our policies and our processes. This is ongoing work, something that the equity and inclusion team is committed to continuing to be a part of. Next slide, please. So the third to last goal here is focused on training counselors and administrators in restorative justice approaches to discipline. Our district diversity coordinator Heather Cole has engaged in significant learning around restorative justice and restorative practices. She then established a small pilot restorative practices administrative cohort that started meeting right before COVID nineteen. Sent us into remote learning. We will continue to engage this administrative cohort moving forward and expand it to incorporate counselors in twenty twenty. Additionally, Heather leads student education sessions at the building level when disciplinary incidents arise that involve diversity related topics. We have served at least eighteen students through these sessions since we started implementing. For twenty twenty, in addition to expanding the restorative practices to counselors, we would also like to provide PD to teachers around tier one restorative practices in the classroom. And finally, we will work on developing concrete metrics to see the impact of restorative education sessions. And assess what impact they're having on students as well as our community. Next slide, please. This particular goal was around hosting regular events, speakers, workshops and classes for community members focused on diversity and equity topics. A student at last night's town hall, Joshua, asked us about how we can get more people involved, particularly those who haven't been involved in the past for a variety of reasons. These are the types of questions that we're going to continue to ask ourselves, we need to continue to ask ourselves. And that we will brainstorm and problem solve solutions for because we recognize that the work of diversity, inclusion and anti racism is something that we all have a hand in. something that we all have a hand in, and we need effective means of bringing everyone into the conversation for growth and dialogue to occur. Starting in 2018, we worked to expand our scope of community offerings by hosting monthly parent workshops around a variety of diversity and inclusion topics. We have even partnered with the Student Well-being Team to host some of these. One community, obviously, is another one that we talk about a lot, another opportunity that's hosted annually with over 400 participants, and it has grown significantly since it started six years ago, to the point where now we have people from all over central Ohio who come and attend the conference. Beyond 2020, you can see up there that it's blank. I think that we need to reckon with Joshua's question, and we welcome collaboration about new ways to expand our programming and efforts for the community. So we welcome all ideas to help move us forward in this way. Next slide, please. And this is the, the last slide of my update. So the last goal was to develop metrics to measure progress in diversity and equity initiatives. So we developed nine metrics or key performance indicators to determine our progress towards equity and inclusion initiatives in 2018. And those metrics are as follows. The first is around course enrollment reports. So we were looking to see growth in the percentage and numbers of students from underrepresented subgroups enrolling in AP courses. That was met. We were also looking at decreasing the numbers of students referred in disciplinary action because of diversity-based bullying or harassment. That is currently unmet. We need to create metrics to track this consistently. We also established a metric of decreasing the number of repeat offenders after students participated in district-developed restorative practice education sessions. Again, currently unmet because we're going to be working on creating metrics to track this consistently. We had a metric of increasing the number of student participants at the One Community Conference. This has been met. We had a metric of increasing in teacher self-reporting of confidence incorporating diversity and culture into their teaching practice. This has been met. We had a metric of reducing the gap between teacher and student perception of how often diversity and culture are incorporated into the learning experience. This metric has been met. We had a metric of increasing the percentage of diverse administrative certified and classified hires across the district over the last two years. That has been met. We had a metric of increasing the number of diversity, equity, and inclusion-focused OPDA courses offered to our staff. This metric has been met. And the last one was increasing the number of diversity and culture-based outreach opportunities for families at the building and district level. This metric has also been met. So for 2020 and beyond, we hope to develop even more specific metrics to help measure our growth from year over year with our initiatives so that we can be able to report out to the community better with increased transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fiesel has her hand up first. Go ahead and Julie.
Yes. Jackie, thanks for that extensive presentation. The first, I just have two questions. The first question was, how many people were on last night's call? And I know that June 30th's call is full. Is June 29th's call full as well for the town halls?
Yes. So just to quickly address, address that also for anybody who may be listening. Our Microsoft Teams video conferencing application only has the capacity right now to host 200 people. And so because of the fact that, you know, we wanted to make sure to accommodate as many people as possible, and know that we'd like to accommodate board members, district leadership, as well as Heather, Shannon, and myself, we made the decision to cut off participant enrollment and registration at 180 to make sure that we were safe, that nobody would be locked out who was trying to come into the session. We have reached 180 or more because a couple times it actually slipped through because there was such a wave of participants and interest, which was fantastic. So we have reached 180 or greater on all three of those days. So the forms are currently, are currently shut down. We can definitely look into offering another opportunity. There will be additional opportunities moving forward that may not be in the town hall format, but if there is increased interest in people who could not make one of the three, we can definitely consider that. Additionally, we will be posting the videos of all three town halls on the district website under the Equity and Inclusion tab. To answer your question, Ms. Fiesel, about how many people attended the town hall last night, I believe we had around 118, which is frustrating to know that there was drop-off when others may have wanted to attend, but this is something that we have struggled with in terms of, you know, having full turnout at events that match the registered participants. So we know that there's a lot of interest out there. It's just sometimes people's schedules and different things don't always allow for them to be able to make it. So I think that we had somewhere around 100, I think it was 118 participants.
Thanks. And then my second question is, how much control do we have over curriculum in teaching diverse topics? And how much is really controlled at the state level? For example, I was an adult when I found out about the Japanese internment camps and the black women's involvement in bringing men to the moon, and even the Juneteenth celebration and what it stood for. And I went through, you know, a central Ohio public school system. So I was just wondering, you know, how much of our curriculum is controlled by the state versus what we have control over diverse topics?
Yeah, so I think that that's a really great question. You know, obviously, the state is really what sets out those, those standards, those benchmarks. They determine what our students should be learning across every single grade level. But I know, like in our district, we have the mission of facilitating maximum learning. And so for us, we have always viewed that as, that is the bare minimum that our students should be meeting. And so we recognize that there are huge gaps at the state level in terms of the diversification of the curriculum. I believe that the term slavery is only mentioned two times between kindergarten through 12th grade. So we know that there is a lot that is lacking that needs to be addressed, and that that is something that can and really should be advocated for at the state level. What we can do at the district level is ensure that we have provided teachers with the information about how to build upon those standards in a way that includes, includes diverse resources and diverse perspectives as we, you know, seek to teach a true and accurate historical account for our students and ensure all of our students see themselves represented in the curriculum. So I think that you bring to light a really important point that, you know, this is really well beyond just the Olentangie school system, and it goes up to the state and the national level of what are those expectations that those leaders have for what our students should be, should be learning in those areas.
Julie, did you have any other questions? Lakeisha has her hand up. Okay. I think.
Sorry, I muted myself. I'm done.
Okay. All right. Dr. Wise.
Yes, I just wanted to verify, when you were talking about the restorative practices, the number, was it 18 students or were you just saying that the year?
Oh, yeah, sorry. That was probably confusing. It was, it was 18 students. So we have not, we are working on developing, like I said, more clear, like, metrics and tracking for us to be able to keep track of those student sessions. Right now, the way that we have offered them is in a supplementary capacity to principals. If they would like to take advantage of those, we would like to expand, you know, our efforts and our resources in that area to be able to reach more students with those sessions. But anytime that we are contacted to do, to do one, we have provided it across a variety of areas, and sometimes we even meet with students multiple times. So the 18 is 18 individual students. That doesn't necessarily represent the total number of sessions that have been hosted with the students, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, it does. And that's for the 2018 to 2020, the two-year period?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a question. It's around, you know, I know in the high school, we offer World Religions class, and, you know, or is it a possibility that we could potentially offer a Cultural Studies class? I remember taking such a course in college. It was a requirement. I was a business major, so I took Japanese, I studied the Japanese culture, and it was integral as, because there are several things that, you know, ignorance is offensive to that culture, and certain, certain things that we do as part of our culture are offensive that way. Do we have the opportunity, Dr. Merkel, to, you know, look at like a Cultural Studies class where we can cover multiple cultures?
Absolutely. I think that's a fantastic question. And I know, you know, we have been, we have been approached by people over the years asking if that's something that, that we can do. And absolutely, it's definitely something that we can do. And I think, you know, it's important for, you know, those that are interested in that to understand the logistics of what that would entail in terms of, you know, FTEs or full-time employees that might need to be hired if we off, if we choose to offer a course that is a mandatory course rather than an optional course offering. Now, if we choose to offer something as an elective course, then that's something where any of our current teachers that are teaching an elective course, if they are passionate about teaching something such as a black history, you know, course, or a cultural studies course, or looking at diversity in film, or whatever it might be, that they can develop and put a course proposal together and put that in front of our committee that reviews those course proposals for adoption. So that, there's definitely routes and avenues to be able to do that, and I would love to see us work towards that as a goal.
Okay. I had another question statement. I know that we're getting ready to do some transitioning with the website software that that hosts our website. And within the diversity and inclusion, I know back in 2018, a lot of students weren't aware of the reporting hotline that we have. And so I know that the principals individually had some, you know, some of their class meetings where they covered this topic, and, and kids weren't, you know, weren't really aware. We had a lot of mental health issues that we wanted them to utilize it for, or, or even issues of racism. So will there be, I just want people to be able to find it and know that it's there very, very easily? Can we have some type of link from the diversity and inclusion page?
Yes, absolutely. I know back in 2018, I had worked, we had worked with Rob Sexton and Randy Wright on ensuring that that icon was moved and highly visible on the main page. And when we did that, we also saw an increased number in reports because having increased visibility allows people to know that it's there and they're utilizing it. So I think it's very important that, you know, on the new website and on the new system, that it is still, you know, visible there. And so, you know, engaging in conversation with communications and technology about where that will be located and widely communicating that to people. Additionally, it will always be linked as a part of the Equity and Inclusion page so that people can find it there.
Okay, great.
Mindy, I'm just gonna jump in. This is Krista. We have already, with the website design, we already have that prominently featured in two places on the homepage, the landing page for the new site, which will roll out next week, and then on each building page, and then on the department pages. And we will share just overall, when the site is launched, a tutorial and, you know, kind of show everybody around the site and where things are located. So it'll be a great opportunity to let everyone know where those icons can be found so that folks can report as needed.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm looking to see, do we have any other questions? Let's see. Thank you again, Mr. Meyer, Dr. Merkel, Mr. Rafe, for the update in that area. We truly appreciate it, and it is, it was very encompassing. So thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Our pleasure. I didn't know if I, Dr. Merkel, I got to request her to attend. I didn't think I had a choice.
You didn't. You didn't, but I appreciate.
I mean, not about that report, about attending the board meeting.
No, you, you don't have a choice. Okay, well, I think that concludes our discussion items for tonight's evening. So we have some board action items. So I will ask if, first of all, do we have any discussion? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve board action items A through G.
Salute, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. A second.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Excuse me, I had to unmute myself. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Hatfield, would you please present your treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I'd like to present treasurer action items A through G for approval, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King. A second.
Second.
Was that Dr. Wise?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, will you please present your superintendent, superintendent action items?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to present superintendent action items eight through K for approval.
Salute.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel. A second.
Second. Dr. Wise.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one action item to be presented by our chief operations officer.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to present action item 14A, supplemental employment for Kathryn Rafe as building leadership team member at Freedom Trail Elementary School.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I think that was Mrs. Fiesel. A second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Thought I was on mute. Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
See what happens when we go really long? We just kind of get a little squirrely, don't we?
I, I think Mr. O'Brien's mute was intentional. Follow in there. Okay, so now I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session as permitted by section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider employment of a public employee. And we will, do I have a motion to move into executive session at, let's say, 9:00 PM?
Salute, Kathryn O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. A second.
A second, Dr. Wise.
Thank you, Lakeisha. Now, please call the roll, Mrs. Hatfield.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes. We will now move to an executive session. We will only return to adjourn to this meeting. So thank you for joining us, and I believe our next board meeting is June 9th, or July 9th, July 9th.
So sorry, so do we hang up and go back into a different room?
We do, I don't know that we have to hang up. I know that, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, we are back in our normal board session and it is 9:34 PM. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. All right. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night. Thank you.